We will start off with prayer led by Councilman Copeland.
We have our hearts to Lord, we thank you for this day. We thank you for another opportunity for us a lucky officials to come together to work on behalf of the great city of Saginaw. Lord, we ask that as we go along this meeting, that you will provide wisdom and insight that we will make the best decisions that will push and thrust our city into greater greatness. So, Lord, we ask that you touch our citizens that are in this city, those who are downtrodden, those who are brokenhearted, those who are struggling. Lord, we ask that you just supply the needs that we have for our city and that you will supply everything that we need. We give you praise and glory in your name in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to tonight's council meeting. Madam Clerk, can we have roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to remind everyone that you need to state if you're present and that the city and state you are participating in. Councilmember Williams.
President from Michigan.
Councilmember Balls.
President from Saginaw, Michigan.
Councilmember Bench.
President from Saginaw, Michigan.
Councilmember Ostache.
President from Saginaw, Michigan.
Councilmember Scherzer.
President Saginaw, Michigan.
Councilmember Copeland.
President from Saginaw, Michigan.
Councilmember Lamar Sylvia.
President Saginaw.
Councilmember Flores is not with us yet, and Mayor Moore.
President Saginaw, Michigan.
We have eight members present, one absent. You do have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
That takes us to announcements, and I do not have any this evening, Mayor, so that will move us to public hearings.
Okay. Comments? Okay, I need a motion. Public comment is now open, right?
Right. Our first public hearing is regarding the urban cooperation agreement with Spalding Township to provide building inspection, planning, and zoning services.
Do we have anyone from that corporation to speak?
Good evening, Madam Mayor. John Stempel here tonight. How are you?
Just fine yourself.
I'm doing well. The, uh, I'm here tonight as the main presenter on this item. The city of Saginaw, for Spalding Township, among other jurisdictions, does provide building inspection services, code enforcement services, as well as planning and zoning services to other jurisdictions. We do this, uh, one, to assist our neighbors with providing these services because many of the smaller communities, they, they don't have the ability to have full-time staff, as well as, uh, they do also have, uh, they provide revenue for us for support our, our operations at the city. Um, with regard to Spalding Township, we've been doing work for them for about four years. Uh, we provide all the construction administration, planning, zoning, and code enforcement as, on an as-needed basis. Um, and it's worked out quite well for us. Um, it, it does support our operation here in the city, as well as, uh, helping with the, uh, code enforcement issues in jurisdictions that surround the city. So, it does work out very well for, for both parties. Um, and, uh, we've had a very good relationship with Spalding. Um, we did, uh, increase our, uh, costs for the services due to the increase in, in work that has happened, mainly because of the, uh, medical marijuana, uh, projects that are going in Spalding Township, but it has increased our workload, as well as some code enforcement activities related to, uh, abandoned properties, a lot of them actually on the main thoroughfare into the city. So, this, uh, these agreements have benefited the city, uh, both in revenue, as well as, um, what things look like as folks travel into the city of Saginaw. That's all I have on this tonight. I will be available on the call, uh, later in the meeting during the consent agenda where you will have an opportunity to ask questions. So, if there are any questions, I will be still on the call at that time. Thank you for your time this evening, and take care.
Is there anyone else with any comments? Is there anyone else with any comments? Is there anyone else with comments? I need a motion to close the hearing.
Bench moves to close the hearing.
Support. Michael Balls.
It's been moved and it's been moved and supported. No discussion, because we'll be talking about it later. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. We are a public input, and, uh, we do not have anyone that signed up for tonight. So, we will move on to the remarks of the council.
It's just for all council members, you have a three-minute amendment. Please get all your hand that you like to get. Let the audience know that you know what's going within those three minutes. And tonight, we will start with.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I don't have a lot tonight, but I do want to, um, thank Mayor Moore, um, for, for sharing her experience, uh, getting the vaccine this last week. Um, we know there's a lot of uncertainty in the community, and, um, I think that it's just really nice and, and, uh, very reassuring that our mayor was willing to share her experience with us. Um, and I think that any one of us who are able to get our vaccine and don't share concerns about the, uh, safety of it, we should do that. Uh, make sure that we're leading by example as best we can. So, it's nice that, uh, Mayor Moore was willing to do that and share that. Um, we are in Phase 1B for our vaccines at the health department. Um, that means people sixty-five and older, and, um, some essential workers are being vaccinated right now. So, um, you can go to the county website, um, to register, to, to reserve your, um, vaccine. Whether you're in the, um, 1B phase or not, you can still go ahead and register if you're interested in getting the vaccine when your turn does come. Um, if you can't do it via the internet, I know we've got a lot of older folks in Saginaw who, um, might, might not have access to the internet. Um, the phone number you want to call there is nine-eight-nine seven-nine-seven six-eight-eight-zero. Um, I'd also like to encourage everybody that once you get your vaccine, that you continue to wear your masks, um, just because you've been vaccinated, especially those of us who are waiting for, or have had a first one and then are waiting for a second one. Um, it's still important to maintain a safe social distance and, and, and wear your masks. Um, and the other thing I've read, and I'm, I'm sure that that advice will probably start being put out there more if it's not already, but, um, if you're not able to get your vaccine, uh, with the, um, virus being, uh, found here that's more contagious, uh, people are being encouraged to wear two masks and double mask if they can, if they can't avoid being in public. Um, I know it's uncomfortable, but I wear two masks at work when I'm working with the public, um, just because I feel safer that way, and I know that having two masks makes sure, you know, keeps people safe from me as well. Um, but that's all I have. Um, it's good to see Councilman Copeland back and feeling well, and, uh, my love and sympathies to, uh, Councilman Ostache.
You.
That's all I have.
Councilman Ostache.
Thanks, Mayor, and, uh, thanks, Councilwoman Bench, for your condolences. Um, Mayor, I really don't have a lot to say tonight. Uh, I kinda wanted to talk about what Aunt, uh, Councilwoman Bench was just talking about.
We're all going in orbit.
All in orbit.
Okay. Now, Bill.
Can you still, am I back? Okay, I, I think I'm good. I'll keep talking.
I see.
Okay. Well, I was excited to see that our fire department, um, I'm pretty, a lot of our frontline workers here at the city are, are also getting their vaccinations, those who would like to get them. So, I was excited to see that, especially on our fire department, because they are working in emergency rescue missions with our, with, um, citizens and residents. So, the city that even puts them at a little bit higher risk with some of the, uh, tasks that they perform in their job. Um, I'm excited myself to eventually, I hope I have to come in 1C, so I'm looking forward to it. But, Councilwoman Bench, you made a very good comment, and I do want to reiterate on what you said about mask wearing, because even though we are vaccinated, and even if we get our second dose, um, there is still the chance that you can carry that virus in your nasal cavities or that, and you could still pass it on to somebody. Um, so that is a very, um, important thing that we let folks know. And so that is something that the health departments have been talking about as well. Um, Mayor, I really do not have anything else, so I will sign off. Thanks.
Councilman Ostache, your first two minutes, and I'm not trying to give him extra time, you were in orbit. I don't know if everybody heard, but he said, okay, okay, okay. He was in orbit on my computers.
He's agreeing. Okay, colleagues are saying yes. Thank you.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. Okay, and next we will have Councilwoman Scherzer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I just want to share a couple of things. Consumers Energy has, uh, announced they have three million dollars to help, um, some people with their consumers bill this winter. So, they have awarded it to seven agencies. Um, if you are interested, you just need to call 211, or you can call Consumers directly at one-eight-hundred-four-seven-seven-fifty-fifty. Um, so, if there's anyone out there, any of our residents that are in need of some assistance, please take advantage of it. Um, the snow is coming tonight, um, so I want to, well, I hope everyone is ready for it, but also make sure you take the precautions necessary and stay safe. Um, then the last few things, uh, I want to mirror pretty much what everyone else has says, to please wear a mask, um, and get your vaccination if you can, and please support local, shop local, eat local. The restrictions are being lifted February first, but we still need to support our community and our entrepreneurs and our businesses right here in our city of Saginaw. So, please support local. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Copeland.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening to everyone. Um, it is really, um, great to be here tonight. Um, it is, I'm gonna say this while getting emotional, um, just because it, it has, um, these past couple of weeks have been very trying, um, but I'm glad to be here. I'm glad to be alive. I'm glad to, um, see you all. Um, and so, um, thank you for your prayers, your calls, your messages. I truly, I truly, to the citizens of Saginaw who reached out, I really appreciate that. Um, I really needed that. Um, it came, come to find out while I was going through COVID, four of my immediate family members in Maryland are also going through COVID at the same time. Um, and we didn't know, but, um, we, we're, we're here. We're here. Everyone is thriving. Everyone is saved, and I am thankful to God for that. Um, during that time, I did have a really, when you're on your bed, you can't do anything much but to read and, you know, do a lot of things. So, um, it was great to see a lot of things that brought some joy to me. Um, and it was a lot of the things that were going on in the city of Saginaw that I saw for some of the residents. And so, I just wanted to share some of those tonight, um, just to, just, um, just to talk about some great things that our citizens are doing, people from Saginaw. The first one is, um, Rush D. Williams. He is a music producer and owner, owner of B Genius Records. He is a Saginaw native, um, and he just received another platinum record. Um, so that's, that's good business, um, and he's representing Saginaw. Um, I want to say congratulations to Staff Sergeant China Daly, Daly. She was just recently promoted to Sergeant First Class in the Army. Um, she's been serving our nation for eleven years. Um, and she's been working hard for this promotion, so, um, she's representing Saginaw. Um, and then we also have Mr. Tony Tatum, who represented the city of Saginaw on Ricky Smiley's Comedy and Karaoke Night, uh, that was worldwide. Um, and he was singing, uh, Lenny Williams', um, "'Cause I Love You", and that man sang. So, um, just representing Saginaw. And then we have a thirteen-year-old SAS student who started his own magazine called Swag Magazine. His first publication came out this past week, uh, and he has some great articles in the magazine. Um, and if you can, just follow his page. He's doing great things, and I want to great, say great job to mom, who is supporting his endeavors as well. It makes a big difference when our parents are supporting our youth and this generation. Um, his goal is to be a media, what did he say? He wants to be a media mogul, and he wants to build a media empire. We, I believe he can do it, right here in the city of Saginaw. We have the support. And then also, uh, finally, I want to say, uh, congratulations to Alvin Pratt, Michael Pratt, Tricia Pratt, Pratt, James Carthon, Jimmy Bentley, Greg Hayes, Kevin and Shannon Hayes, Charles Parks, and Ray Jones on their purchase of the need. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we will have Councilwoman Mar Sylvia.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Moore. I don't have much, but I wanted to, uh, send out kudos to, um, Dahl. I think you all might know her better as the coupon ambassador. So, uh, if she reaches out, it'd be good. It's, uh, she's been doing a lot, a lot, a lot of work in the community, uh, in regards to, uh, helping, uh, some unfortunate people. And also, um, I'd like to say that, um, in, in, in this COVID season right now, let's just check on people. Some people can't get out. Some people won't get out, but if we just, um, take a couple minutes to check on people to make sure they're all right. Thank you very much. You all have a great day.
Thank you. Next, we will have Councilman Floret.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I want to reiterate every, uh, what everyone else has said here about COVID. We are seeing a downturn in cases, but this new variant is, uh, increasingly worrisome. So, I want to make sure that everyone has the necessary resources. And I'll share a personal story real quick. My mother had applied to, uh, be given the vaccination. She was part of 1B. Um, she had gotten a call on a Wednesday to tell, and they told her to come in on a Thursday, and that's how quick it can be. So, if anybody needs any information, uh, two-eleven northeast Michigan, they have a hotline. It's eight-eight-eight-six-three-six-four-two-one-one. Again, that's eight-eight-eight-six-three-six-four-two-one-one. Uh, I have always been a fan of double or triple masking. As many masks as I can find in my car or in my pocket, I put them on. Uh, and so, please, everybody mask up. I've been out in the public. There are a lot of people that are wearing the masks and a few that are not, and that's worrisome. So, uh, let's continue to fight this the best that.
Okay, are you through?
Can you repeat that number?
I don't know. I think he's in orbit again.
Mayor, we can get that number and send it out to council later.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Next, we have Councilman Williams.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, and before I get going, uh, Councilman Copeland, if you, the young man with the magazine, if you could text that or send that information out, because I don't think you mentioned his name, and I would like to, uh, follow, follow him. Uh, but good evening, everyone. I want to say too, uh, that I too will be sharing my, uh, COVID experience as far as being vaccinated. I was vaccinated the other day. I was gonna wait until after the second vac- vaccination. Um, but I was, I was indifferent and whatnot prior to, but I am glad that I did, uh, go ahead and get the process started, and I think it's important, um, that we all do the same. So, Annie, I, I agree with you that we need to get that information out there, and I plan to do so, um, after my second, uh, vaci- vaccination. Um, as far as everything else, I am just, I'm happy that our, uh, country is moving in a new direction. Um, that's been the most exciting, uh, thing that has happened, I mean, for millions of us. Uh, so, I am, I'm very excited about that, and I hope that we, uh, continue this trend in Saginaw, knocking on wood, where we are, um, things are kinda calm right now, and it, and it, it's nice when it's calm. I, I love it when it's calm. Um, so, I, I hope that that continues, and that we can have a, uh, successful twenty-twenty-one as far as, uh, non-violence in the city. So, that's all I have for this evening.
Thank you. Next, we have Mayor Pro Tem Balls.
Good evening, uh, fellow citizens of the city of Saginaw, and my fellow council people. Uh, Councilman Ostache, uh, my wife had mentioned that she, uh, seen, uh, Lady Lassie Ostache has passed away, and I'm sorry to hear that was your mother. My wife is, uh, really, uh, worried about you when she heard about that. I want you to know that. So, uh, our condolences to your family. Uh, Councilman Copeland, um, I didn't know you were sick, brother. I would've reached out to you, but I'm glad to hear that you well now. And, uh, I want to thank you for, uh, making those comments about the, uh, citizens of the city of Saginaw, the ones that's here, and the ones that's not here. I think that's a real positive thing to, uh, give information out about our citizens, especially the ones that are here doing something positive. I think all of the, uh, city council people probably can take a note from you on that tip, and, and maybe we all can start reporting on the good things that's happening in the city of Saginaw, instead of complaining about some of the bad things, um, or even mention it, you know? Um, we know things happen. I'm, uh, extremely happy that things have calmed down in the city of Saginaw. It always do when it get cold outside, and things have a tendency to pick up when it get warm. So, for all the citizens that can hear my voice, um, probably some of the bad guys probably don't even listen to this, but I would ask them to put their guns down and try to be more peaceful, uh, to settle things instead of killing each other and, and hurting each other. Um, you know, I know this COVID got a lot of people locked up in houses, frustrated and doing silly stuff, man, but we gotta find a way to do good things in the city of Saginaw. And thank you, uh, Mr. Copeland for sharing those things. I'm gonna try my best to share some positive things more as, uh, the year go on. Um, other than that, I really don't have a lot to say. Um, I feel the same way. A lot of other people see about the, uh, um, the affairs of the United States federal government, and, uh, I know it's gonna, I, I gotta feel it's gonna perk a lot of things up that, uh, was seeming to be down. And I'm looking forward to the, uh, two thousand and twenty-one and beyond, because I think that sometimes, um, bad things happen. Sometimes because we get a little lax and get a little comfortable with good things, so sometimes bad stuff happens, so we can see what, what we add, you know, what we need to, uh, be more, um, thankful for what God has given us, you know? So, uh, thank God that he's given us a new president, and a new vice president, and a new cabinet, and all the rest of the things that's gonna happen to United States of America. Maybe we can, uh, get a little more revenue back to the city with some Democrats running things. So, um, other than that, uh, appreciate Mayor for giving me the opportunity to speak this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Mayor Pro Tem Balls. Um, good evening to everyone. Uh, let me, let me just assure everybody, I was nervous when I had to take the shot. She did it so smooth. I didn't even know I had it. I. Okay. It, done. It really, um, I, I, I'm, I would like to, everyone, if you're not sure and undoubting, and you have some wavering going on, I say, let's do some research. I did my research on it, and that's what made it, because I was like, Councilman Williams, I was not gonna take it. I said I wasn't gonna take it. But after doing my research, and then having family members who contracted it recently, and losing some friends recently, I said, I need to protect myself, my family, and everyone that I come in contact with. So, I'm blessed, sixty-five, so I got a chance to take it early. Everybody is not that lucky, but if, if at all possible, please, please research it and look at it. Um, I don't have a whole lot to say, except for on February the fourth, I will be doing the State of the City address, and I'm sure it will be quite entertaining for those that know me. It will be quite entertaining. And so, it's at eight o'clock. I'm hoping that my fellow council people will be on. It's gonna be a Zoom, so we don't get to drink coffee and eat breakfast together, but we do get to fellowship at home. So, that's about all that I have. Um, I'm excited about the new year coming in, and I'm also excited about the three new council people. I think that great things will come out of great results, and I know that my fellow council persons who have been here, we all gonna work together. The word for me this year is love. What the world needs now is love, sweet love. With that, thank you, Madam Clerk, and thank you, city. Madam Clerk.
Mayor, we are now at reports from the manager.
Ma- Mr. Cam, it's your turn.
Thank you, Mayor, and I was going to mention Consumers Charitable Foundation and Corporation as well. They've, in total, donated twenty-one million dollars to customers and communities with needs related to COVID-nineteen pandemic, and they are encouraging people to do the same, uh, thing that the city is, and, and, uh, Councilwoman Scherzer mentioned, to call 211 if you have questions about any. That is the best advice that we can give people, because, um, that is the organization that is keeping up with all of the available assistance. That's what it was established for. So, if you have questions or about potential needs, and, and not just with COVID-related assistance as well, call 211 if you have questions about any type of program like that. Um, last week, I had a great, a phone conference with Representative Amos O'Neal. Representative O'Neal is dedicated, uh, to the needs of the city, and I wanted to meet with me to assure us that he's gonna continue to work on some of the projects and initiatives that were started under Representative Vanessa Guerra. And one of those is, um, income tax issue related to, uh, COVID-nineteen. People from working from home can have an impact on the city's revenue, and I know that is a major issue for the urban core mayors. Representative O'Neal is going to continue to work on that issue, uh, and work with the governor's office. Additionally, I proposed to him, uh, a possibility that, uh, the mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and I could meet with him on a, uh, quarterly or bimonthly basis, and he is, um, open to doing that and willing to set that up. And I am, will also be contacting Senator Horn to see if he is interested in participating in that meeting as well, and I'm sure, uh, expect that he will be interested in that. Uh, you may have all seen a story on TV Five this week about the first female police officer in the city of Saginaw, Joy Zessler, turned eighty-five recently. Uh, I thought that was a really good story. Um, Chief Ruth forwarded that to me, and it was on TV Five. She started with the Saginaw Police Department in nineteen-sixty, and, um, applied with the department after she saw an ad in the newspaper. She served the city for nearly thirty years until nineteen-eighty-nine, so it was sure happy birthday. And the last item that I wanted to update council on, um, some of you may recall, uh, we started working on a project, um, some time ago with the Saginaw ISD Saginaw Career Complex and Delta College, especially those of you who are on the, um, city-county-school liaison committee, and may remember this, but we're trying to, uh, create and promote a fire science, education, and career pathway program. The program launch has been somewhat muted, but it is ongoing. Um, not having in-person classes has had an impact on that, but we, uh, we hope that the program continues to grow in the next year in this fall. Hopefully, students can be back in person and can continue to work on that. Um, we hope that that promotes our local youth to be interested in pursuing a career with the Saginaw Fire Department. Uh, the department and the educational organizations involved have created some really good, uh, literature, and I'll forward that out to you in the next day or so, so that you can share that with, uh, people if you'd like to share that. And, um, they also created a really good, uh, video to promote, uh, fire science and firefighter as a career, and they shot, I believe, most of that at the Saginaw Fire Department. So, it has some good, uh, good shots with, uh, with our fire department and our firefighters, and also in M.R. So, I commend our firefighters and man-staff for engaging and creating this opportunity for youth in Saginaw. And with that, um, Madam Mayor, that concludes the management update.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
If there's no questions for the city manager or council.
I am so sorry. I let you off the hook, but not really, city manager. Okay, do we have any questions of the city manager? No questions. Okay, okay. Madam Clerk.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. That takes us to the consent agenda.
The agenda has been set for at City Hall and on the city webpage, and on, and also on, I'm sorry, and you can also tune in on this with channel one-ninety-one. and also on, I'm sorry, and you can also tune in on this with channel one ninety-one. I need a motion to approve, with exceptions, the the agenda, the consent agenda.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the agenda. Michael from Saginaw.
Bench seconds that.
Do we have any exceptions? Do we have any exceptions? Here ain't no exceptions. Do we have, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any comments? Here ain't any comments. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
We are now at Boards Commissioning Committee reports.
Do we have anyone who has anything that they would love to report on any commission that they went to in the past couple of weeks?
Councilman Balls here. I did have a airport board meeting, my first one.
Do we have anyone? I'm in.
Can you hear me? Mayor, I don't know if you can hear me or not, but I did have a board meeting with the with the airport board last week. It was my first meeting, so I'm getting acclimated on some of the things that they're doing. And I can't, I don't have anything to report, but just want to let you know that I'm there and I'm learning, and I will have something to report later.
Okay, thank you. I heard part of it. But what you said was you went to your first meeting last week, and you're getting acclimated. Am I right? Okay. Maybe it's just my computer, but I keep going in orbit. Okay. Madam Clerk.
Mayor, you are now at Appointment of Board and Commission Members.
I need a motion with any exceptions allowed, and we can cover all ten appointments. I need a motion to approve with any exceptions.
Don't move.
Williams second.
Do we have any comments? Here ain't no comments. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? The ayes have it. Madam Clerk.
Mayor, we are now at ordinance introduction. We do have one tonight, and it's to amend Chapter seventy of Title twelve Traffic Regulations by amending Section seventy point zero three, which is titled Rules and Regulations.
I need a motion to introduce.
Bench moves to introduce.
Well, worth that.
It's been moved and supported. Do we have any comments? This ordinance is is going to be laid over under the childish
Mayor, would you take a vote first, please?
I'm sorry. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Now I can see it. This ordinance is to be laid over under the childish provision. Thank you so much, Madam Clerk.
Oh, you're welcome, Mayor. We're going to go to resolutions now, and we do have one tonight. And it's to approve the Community Development Block Grant COVID nineteen program submission for fiscal year twenty twenty-one for two hundred sixty thousand nine hundred sixty-four dollars.
I need a motion to adopt.
Support, Williams.
Mr. Ma, Mr. Ma, I seen him out, but I think he made the motion. And Councilman Williams supported. Do we have any discussions?
Just say that it was a listen to the reports. I gained a lot of information from listening to our community organizations present. And I'm looking forward and glad that we are able to support this.
Anyone else? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Madam Clerk.
We are now at miscellaneous business.
Is there any other business that we need to handle? Is there any other business we need to handle?
This is Councilwoman Scherzer. I'm just wondering if the council could get an update on the marijuana applications, just the status of how many have applied. Who was, how many were approved, and just to update where we are. Or
I think the clerk can give a number, and then there there are still some of them that are going to the Planning Commission. Some have been approved, and I think they have some on their agenda tomorrow, but just for the total number, the clerk can update us on that number.
Yes, thank you, City Manager Morales. We currently have eight applications, and they're all under review as we speak. And notifications will be going out shortly to the companies.
Thank you. Thanks for the update.
Is there anyone else? The weatherman said, if you don't have to go out tomorrow, don't go out. So if you have to go out, try to go out, because we out early enough, you can go get your groceries, and you can sit by the fireplace tomorrow. I need a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Support.
Don't move by Scherzer. Okay, and support by?
Everyone.
Everyone.
All those in favor, I know we have no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those didn't think anybody would oppose, so everybody have a great